Call the Onslow County Board of Commissioners's regular meeting for Monday, August 4th, 2025 to order at this time, and we will start with our county attorney, Mr. Brett DeSalms, leading us in the invocation.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come before you and conduct the business of Onslow County. Please be with the commissioners today in their deliberations and bless them with wisdom and guidance as they address the items on today's agenda and guide our hearts and minds in the spirit of fairness. We pray for the men and women in our armed forces who serve our country with tremendous courage, commitment, and sacrifice. May all we do this day bring your honor, bring you honor and glory. We will continue to thank you and praise you for the blessings that you have bestowed upon us. Amen. Now with deep respect for those in the audience today, we'd like to do a moment of silence. Thank you.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the good will, with the repeated justice for all.
I'd like to recognize the elected officials with us this morning. Mayor Pete Parnean from town of Holly Ridge, welcome, and Rick Grant, Alderman from North Topsail Beach, has returned through the country and welcome back. Glad to see him back here, safe and sound. Do we have any others here with us this morning? So I think that has us, has us covered with the elected officials this morning.
Mr. Chairman, I hear there's some desire on the board that there's this good-looking crew sitting in the very back of the room over here on the left, that there's a desire for them to move towards the front, and I just wanted to make, make that motion that we have this good-looking crew in the back move towards the front. Is there a second perhaps?
I got a second for that, and Kevin, you need to move forward.
So I guess, all in favor of that one?
Hey, we have some movement.
We have movement now.
We were joking, we were joking.
All the bad bits moved to the front.
That's a good way to start the, the Monday morning off. We appreciate all the county employees being here this morning and the work that they do, and we asked everyone at this time to set their cell phones to silent or vibrate mode, and now we need a motion to adopt today's agenda.
A motion.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Now we have the approval items on the consent agenda. If there's any board members with any questions or concerns, they can identify that item and remove it from the consent agenda and have it considered separately at the end of the meeting.
Ms. Chairman, I'd ask that we remove item 2J, final offer for real property from, from the items on the consent agenda.
Okay, well, because that's item J.
2J, yes.
2J off the consent agenda added to the end of the agenda. With that being said, we need a motion to accept the consent agenda as amended.
I move second.
Motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries. So we'll move right into item three, which is presentations, and we'll start with this presentation read by our county manager, Mr. David Smitherson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a proclamation of Onslow County Farmers Market Week, August 3rd through August 9th, 2025. Whereas Onslow County farmers and ranchers provide citizens with access to healthily, healthy locally and regionally produced foods through the farmers markets, and whereas farmers markets and other agricultural, agriculture direct marketing outlets provide infrastructure to assist the distribution of farm and value-added products, thereby contributing approximately $9 billion each year to the U.S. economy. And whereas farmers markets serve as significant outlets by which agriculture producers market agricultural products, generating revenue that supports the sustainability of family farms and the revitalization of rural communities nationwide. And whereas Onslow County recognizes the importance of expanding agricultural marketing opportunities that assist and encourage the next generation of farmers and ranchers, generate farm income to help stimulate business development and job creation, build community connections through rural and urban linkages. And whereas the Onslow County Farmers Market opened its first market in 1997 in what is now the parking lot of the Home Depot in Jacksonville, found a permanent home in 2004 and opened at its current location on the Richlands Highway, was the first farmers market to operate on a federally, federal military installation paving the way for other farmers markets across the nation, and the first farmers market in North Carolina to operate with solar panels. And now therefore be it proclaimed, the Board of Commissioners acknowledges the week of August 3rd through 9th, 2025, as Onslow County Farmers Market Week in conjunction with the observance of National Farmers Market Week and calls upon all citizens to celebrate farmers markets with appropriate observance and activities. Presented this the 4th day of August, 2025. Marie Schwanefus, Farmers Market Manager, will accept the proclamation, and Chairman Foster has requested that Chairman Pageant present the proclamation.
Thank you. Believe it or not, I was on the board in 97 when this took place, and it's been a long time ago, but it's a great thing because we've lost a lot of farmland and it couldn't be helped. I mean, a lot of families moved off, their families, mom, dad passed away, they didn't want the farm, but this right here brings a lot of small farmers back in play, which helps Onslow County, and I'm very proud to be part of it as well as this Board of Commissioners, that we've got something for our folks to go and get fresh vegetables that's something that's good for everybody that don't have all the stuff on it that maybe is not healthy for us. So with that being said, I'm so proud of what you do, I'm proud that we're continuing to move forward with it, and it only will get better and bigger, and thank you so much for what you do. Thank you.
Well, actually, I do.
Go ahead.
I would like to invite, thanks, thanks to all of the commissioners for recognizing the farmers and their hard work, and invite you out on Saturday, August the 9th for Farmers Market Day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. The Board offers the public one opportunity to speak during the meeting. Comments should be limited to no more than five minutes and may be on any issue upon which the Board of Commissioners has control. In accordance with the Board's adopted rules of procedure, commissioners shall reserve responses, if any, for the commissioner comment period on the agenda. That being said, we are at item four, public comments. Mr. Smitherson, do we have anyone signed up for public comment this morning?
Yes, sir. Our first speaker is Ari Rakoitz.
Hello again, commissioners. As it confuses one of you for me to call you by name, I will not. When I reference people, places, things, or ideas, I provide examples from interconnected issues to broaden your perspective so that you can better support members of your community with whom you disagree or about whom you care least. We are all trying to survive the cruel, chaotic absurdity of conscious existence, and some things are too cruel to disagree on. We design systems to observe, respect, appreciate, and attempt to cope with nature's chaos. We do not have to infuse our systems with cruelty. Don't deny people of no or different faith our coping mechanisms or privilege yours through cruel policies, procedures, and implementations. Make choices with unity, sustainability, kindness, inclusion, equity, empathy, diversity, critical thinking, and compassion in mind. Thank you for the history of the farmers market. One purpose of studying history is to avoid repeating mistakes. I hope every single person who has ever responded at the conclusion of your prayer is a true believer in your misogynistic deity. I hope that not a single one besides me feels coerced to walk around amenning for the amusement of the wealthy and powerful. I wish I were the only person you have harmed, but clearly I am not. You still encourage children and young adults to violently knock each other around for fun and profit, so it makes sense that you actively fight people experiencing poverty on issues regarding gender, sexuality, race, and freedom of expression, instead of focusing more on how to provide more equitable access to resources, but making sense does not make it acceptable. Shame on y'all for repeating this mistake so many times after so many people throughout the boards and human history have clearly demonstrated favoring one religion over others is detrimental to the development of a kind, just society. So I dragged myself back from the more progressive Pacific Northwest to continue to try to convince the county to live by the values outlined in your strategic plan, not harm us all further with a cruel fascist lip service implementation. I have six questions and I need answers to all six, but the timer will cut me off early. Has or will the Board of Elections receive the funding, resources, and permission to hire the additional staff members and acquire additional resources they need to conduct the closest thing possible to a safe, free, and fair election under the unjust state and federal election guidelines? I've listed their additional needs before, so I hope the commissioners went beyond what the Board of Elections requested in the face of overwhelming evidence that the BOE has suffered decades of insufficient county support. Considering one of you denied such evidence in a private meeting, cruelly dismissing the Board of Elections' evidence of underfunding as their opinion, it's a dim hope. I will remind you of the difference between claim and opinion. Opinions become claims when supported with evidence. People have provided you with overwhelming evidence that many of the county's behaviors have been unconstitutionally cruel since before I was born. Do not backhandedly compliment my delivery while you respond so cruelly to the content again. I hope the upcoming workshop results in a much improved experience for voters. In what measurable ways does Onslow County support the LGBTQIA2+ community? For example, where and when do county-supported drag shows, pride festivals, or other celebrations of LGBTQIA2+ history and culture happen? Recently, the Board reminded the public of the county's role regarding the Juneteenth holiday, quick to seek appreciation for finally acknowledging a holiday celebrated by many of the affected people for more than 150 years, but silent all my comments regarding not only but most notably today Georgetown, exemplifying inequitable distribution of resources affecting people of the LGBTQIA2+ community and people of color, and offensive regarding people of non-Christian faiths. These communities are intersectional. Many of us are members of more than one marginalized community, which can have a compounding effect. Your silence and continued religious persecution is resulting in the Board committing psychological violence toward members of the LGBTQIA2+ community as well as toward people of faiths beyond the Abrahamic trio, Christianity, Judaism, and Islam, although I hope some of them are offended too. You can break the cycle of forcing y'all's sibling rivalry violently on humanity for millennia. Think global, act local. Within the county, where do people of the LGBTQIA2+ community and of non-Christian faiths, especially who have been harmed by religious persecution, have governmentally supported safe spaces to seek healthcare and access to resources without being proselytized at or guided toward faith-based worship? The NAACP is in the process, NAACP, sorry, excuse me, is in the process of adding an LGBTQIA2+ committee, but the closest nonprofit organizations specifically supporting LGBTQIA2+ community members are active in smaller counties. Pitt County has a chapter of PFLAG, Parents and Friends of Lesbians and Gays, and staff from New Bern's One Community are kind enough to show up at some events in Onslow County. PFLAG.org even provides resources for allies who are people of faith struggling to learn to practice more inclusively. But it's your responsibility too, and I do not have enough experience with any of these groups to assure residents of Onslow County that they will not be proselytized at. By refusing to acknowledge that we exist or to treat our existence as less valuable than yours, you choose the wrong side of history. At One No Kings Protest, a sign read, "If you ever wondered what you would do during the Holocaust," you're doing it right now.
Mr. Smitherson, we have anyone else signed up for public comment?
That is the last speaker on our list, sir.
All right, thank you, sir. We'll move right into item five, our public hearings. We have a few scheduled this morning, and we'll start with a public hearing on the Double R Farm rezoning, and I have a feeling Mr. Metcalf is going to come up to share with us this morning.
Good morning, Chairman and Board of Commissioners. First item before you for our rezonings is Double R Farm rezoning, P R Z 2025, number 11. The applicant is Mr. John L. Pearson and Associates, and the owners are Double R Farm Services, LLC. So take a look at the overview of the request. It's from Rural Agriculture or RA to Community, excuse me, to Residential 10 or R10. Tax map number is 325-88. It's located on Merle Hill Road in the Jacksonville Township. The entire parcel is 241.52 acres, and the proposed rezoning is just 12.28 acre portion of the 241 total parcel. The current use of the property is that it is forested at this time. Take a look at the services. It is a 12-inch unwashed water main along Merle Hill Road. Nearby properties are served by individual septic systems. Fire service for the property is Southwest with an ISO rating of three. We take a look at the traffic. In 2022 was our most recent traffic count, that was nearby, had a trip count of 3,100. Staff estimates capacity at 13,100. Schools serving the area are Blue Creek Elementary, Southwest Middle School, and Southwest High School. All schools would have capacity for any proposed development at the R10 density on site. Here you can see the total property outlined in black. Then you can see the proposed rezoning area there in the red with the crosshatching there along Merle Hill Road. Comparison to two zoning districts, the current zoning district is RA. Its purpose is to maintain the rural development pattern that preserves our agricultural character. It allows for some low-density single-family uses and a variety of non-residential uses. Comparatively, Residential 10 is to accommodate moderate-density single-family and provides for limited multifamily. The density for multifamily is 10 dwelling units per acre, and the minimum lot size is 10,000 square feet. It's predominantly for our residential uses, and it's in an urbanizing area of the county that have access to necessary utility and transportation infrastructure. We take a look at the comprehensive plan. It is intent, is the, excuse me, the category is suburban growth, and its intent is for moderate-density residential development and thus corresponding supporting non-residential development. We look at the land use and development summary. Prescribed a four to five dwelling unit per acre for single-family residential development or multifamily developments at eight to 10 dwelling units per acre. Residential 10 is a corresponding zoning district to suburban growth. Here you can see the entire area is in that suburban growth category. Take a look at environmental conditions. There are a variety of blue line streams in the surrounding area. None are specifically mapped on this property, but again, there are several that get either adjacent or in the nearby neighborhoods. There are no regulated floodplains on the property, and no wetlands have been submitted to county staff at this time. However, that would be handled through the development review process. We take a look at reasonableness and in the public interest. Consider reasonable because it aligns with our future land use map and objective 1.1, we are to utilize our future land use map. Objective 1.2, we want to proactively manage growth and guide new development towards areas with capacity. There are several aspects of infrastructure that have capacity in this area. Want to coordinate with Onslow County Schools, and that's not just with specific funding, but also with guiding growth to where schools have capacity. Objective 6.1 is supporting and non-supporting. It supports it because we want to have a variety of housing types. R10 would allow multifamily, however, RA allows for manufactured housing where R10 does not. And objective 1.3 would be non-supporting, where we want to preserve the rural landscape of the county, and this would involve the development of forested lands. Planning Board heard the item on June 5th, and the Planning Board recommended unanimously for approval. No citizens spoke against the request. One applicant, or excuse me, one citizen did submit an email against it. Their concerns were on the roadway infrastructure having enough capacity and just in general the ecosystem and animal welfare in the surrounding area. No military impacts were presented during the Planning Board meeting. Chairman of the Planning Board remarks as follows. The total of the 12.28 acres of the 241.52 acre parcel on Merle Hill Road is to be subdivided and recorded if approved, is zoned RA and to be zoned R10 if approved. One letter was received opposing the rezoning. However, the planning board found that it is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the future land use map. Here you can see, again, a greater aerial of the surrounding area. The property there is mostly forested. There is a little entrance road to the greater property there that's adjacent to the proposed rezoned property, and you can see the houses there along Merle Hill Road right across from the proposed rezoning area. Here you can see where we posted the sign in anticipation of today's meeting. There's a little bit of a wider look if you stood on that entrance road and took a view there, that is the proposed rezoning area. So it's respectfully requested, the Board of Commissioners consider the proposed zoning map amendment of P R Z 2025, number 11, and adopt a statement of consistency for the amendment and authorize the chairman to sign the necessary documents on behalf of the county. Let's get close to this top presentation, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Metcalf. At this time, we will open the public hearing. Mr. Smitherson, do we have anyone signed up to speak during this public hearing?
Yes, sir. Our first speaker is John Pierce.
Good morning, John Pierce, 405 Johnson Boulevard. I'd like to just point out, I think Carter did a pretty good job. It's, you know, we have recorded a plat for the, for the 12-acre track. It's been filed with Onslow County Register of Deeds, and the folks I represent are planning on putting on the property, on the whole track. There's only four duplexes on the track, and that's what the plan is, and I'll, I'll be here to answer any questions you may have, but it's, actually, he's built up the road. He's built five up the road from it, and it's a pretty good service to the military and for, for, for the four rental units. Like I say, I'll be here to answer any questions anybody has. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. Ms. Smitherson?
Our next speaker is Laurie Swindell.
Chair Foster, Vice Chair Nappin, Commissioners, thanks for listening to me. I'm here representing my husband and I. We live at 1287 Merle Hill Road, and this proposed zone change we're very opposed to as well as any development. We retired to have peace and quiet, and it's going to cause a lot of issues in the future. So I appreciate you hearing me. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's no one else signed up for this hearing, Mr. Chairman?
This time we'll close the public hearing and bring it to the commissioners. Any motion?
I got a question.
Motion approved.
Motion, second. And a second, any discussion?
This rezoning, what is, I was listening to what you said, is that, are they trying to put up a residential area on Merle Hill? Is that what I'm hearing?
I think it's four duplexes.
The proposed rezoning is to Residential Chair, Residential 10 Vice Chairman, so it would allow for both single-family as well as multifamily. So several duplexes on one piece of property would be considered multifamily, and they could do up to 10 units per acre. That's what would be allowed under the zoning if it was approved by the Board.
10 units per acre, you mean apartments or duplexes?
Yes, sir. So either apartments where they, you know, have a vertical stacking to them, or duplexes, it's just kind of two dwelling units that are side by side without a property line. So they could do a series of duplexes, provided that the total number of dwelling units across all those duplexes did not exceed 10 per acre.
Mr. Pierce. While they're talking, what is, what is the plan for the rest of that 200-plus acres?
To my knowledge, it's going to remain as it is at this current time, and most of it is owned RA, and the plans that we have is just to build four on the, four units on the piece of property at this point, just like they were built up the road from that. But far as I know, Mr. Ross don't have any plans other than keep it in the rural agriculture at this point. Thank you.
Any further discussion, questions? Hearing none, all in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, hearing none, motion carries. We'll move to item 5B, public hearing on the Shrum rezoning, Shrum?
Yes, sir. Is the Shrum rezoning, P R Z 2025, number 12. The applicant is the same as the owner, Mr. Richard W. Shrum. So take an overview of the request. It's from Residential 15 to Rural Agriculture. It's one tax map number in question, 100-6.1. It's located at 2081 Catherine Lake Road and is in the Richlands Township. Rezoning area is the entire parcel of 2.79 acres. The existing use is single-family and is the residence of Mr. Shrum. The services for the area are a 10-inch unwashed water main that is along Catherine Lake Road. Nearby properties are served by individual septic systems. There is an environmental health historical records permit, which was done in 2019, and you can see the number there on your screen. Served by the Roadstown Fire Department with an ISO rating of four, and is located, and excuse me, the traffic count we have on Catherine Lake Road comes from 2023, the trip count of 9,300. Staff estimates the capacity a little over 14,000. All schools have capacity, and it would propose, because it's a downzoning, no additional students would be proposed to the school system. Here you can see the variety of zonings in the area. We have both Residential 15 there in the lighter pink, the darker red colors are -8M. There's Rural Agriculture there to the west, about fifth of a mile down Catherine Lake Road. However, there is some sporadic community business and conservation zoning. Comparing the two districts, Residential 15 is to accommodate moderate-density single-family residential development, provides for a minimum lot size of 15,000 square feet, and again, it's for single-family development. Multifamily is not permitted in that zoning district. Rural agriculture's purpose is to maintain that rural development pattern and preserve our agricultural character. Minimum lot size is 20,000 square foot, and single-family is allowed while some also limited non-residential uses. Take a look at the comprehensive plan is for the rural residential category. Its intent is to provide for low-density single-family residential development in our rural areas of the county. When we look at the land use and development summary, it's residential, has allows for single-family residential development, is prescribed at a density of two dwelling units per acre. Rural agriculture would be considered a corresponding zoning district to the rural residential category. Here you can see the entire area there is in the rural residential category along Catherine Lake Road. There are no blue line streams or regulated flood zones on the property, no wetlands donations have been submitted to county staff, and across the road there, you can see the outline of the shoreline for Catherine Lake Road, or excuse me, for Catherine Lake for which the road gets its name. It's considered reasonableness in the public interest because rural residential does have rural agriculture as a corresponding zoning district, so the future land use map aligns with the proposed request. Objective 1.3 supports it because this is considered a downzoning, so we'd be preserving some of our rural character. Objective 6.1 would support the request because RA has a variety of housing options from stick-built, modular, and manufactured homes. And non-supporting, objective 5.6, we want to support efforts to protect cultural and historical sites. This property does fall within the Catherine Lake Historical District. From our conversations with Mr. Shrum, there's no intent really to change the house, and we'll elaborate on that further, but it is technically within that cultural area. However, a downzoning would allow for less development in terms of single-family homes. Planning Board met on July 10th and recommended unanimous approval of the request. The applicant was unable to attend the meeting but submitted a letter in advance. That letter has been provided to the Board. For the sake of brevity, I won't read that letter, but it was read at Planning Board. No citizens, though, spoke against the request, and no military impacts were presented during the Planning Board meeting. Here you can see the property there located along Catherine Lake Road, and there to the north is Catherine Lake. Closer look, you can see the historical home on the property as well as a variety of accessory structures. It's kind of there at the intersection of Catherine Lake and this easement of Booth Lane. Here you can see Here you can see where we posted for, um, today's meeting. And a little bit of a wider look at the property, and there you can see, um, the single-family dwelling on the property. And also, uh, the remarks of the Chairman of the Planning Board. It's total of 2.79 acres on Catherine Lake Road, zoned R15, proposed to be zoned RA. The owner cited a need for an additional accessory building, which would not be allowed in R15, and she's referencing the letter, which she had submitted to the Board. Uh, no citizen spoke to this application, and the Planning Board found it to be consistent with the comprehensive plan and the land use map. So it's respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider their proposed zoning map amendment of P R Z 2025 number 12, and adopt a statement of consistency for the amendment, and authorize the chairman to sign the necessary documents on behalf of the county. This concludes this staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Metcalf. We have anyone? We'll open the public hearing. Mr. Smitherman, do we have anyone signed up to speak?
No, we do not.
Thank you, sir. So we will close the public hearing at this time.
Motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. So, Mr. Metcalf, if you'll come on back up for the hearing on the Ashley Motors rezoning. Keep him closer.
Yeah. Just getting my steps in, sir. It's helpful. Um, Ashley Motors rezoning, P R Z 2025 number 13. The applicant is Mr. John L. Pierce and Associates, and the owners are Ashley Motors Incorporated. So we take a look at the request. It's from rural agriculture to community business, or RA to CB. Tax map number in question is 324-194, and it's located at 2176 Burgah Highway in the Jacksonville Township. The proposed rezoning is the entire parcel of 23.50 acres. Um, as two uses on the property, there is the existing business for, um, the Ashley Motors, um, and then the remnant of the property is forested. Take a look at the services. There's a 12-inch underwater water main along Burgah Highway. Nearby properties are served by individual septic systems, and there's environmental health operations permit from 2020 on file for the business. Fire service for the area is southwest with an ISO rating of three, and our most recent nearby traffic count comes from 2023, a trip count of 13,000. Staff estimates the capacity of the roadway at 15,500, um, so we are getting close to staff estimated capacity for a Level D service. Schools serving the area are Blue Creek Elementary, Southwest Middle School, and Southwest High School. Currently, all schools have capacity. If you propose a build-out of multifamily across the entire property, um, then the elementary school would be over capacity, but the middle school and high school would have capacity. And again, that's assuming a multifamily build-out of the property, which is allowed in community business. Here you can see the proposed zoning area. Most of the area is rural agriculture. Um, there are nearby properties that are zoned community business or highway business. We'll compare the two districts. Rural agriculture's purpose is to maintain the rural development pattern that preserves the agricultural character of the county. Minimum lot size of 20,000 square feet, provides for residential uses and some limited non-residential uses. Comparatively to community business, it's to accommodate established on a small-scale retail and service uses that serve that nearby community, um, limited residential uses, but does allow for multifamily at 10 dwelling units per acre, and provides for a variety of non-residential uses. Take a look, the comprehensive plan outlines property suburban growth and provides for opportunities for moderate-density residential development and supporting non-residential development as well. Look at the non-residential land use and development summary. Commercial uses that support neighborhoods and suburban growth. Um, they're prescribed to be located along arterial roads or at major intersections, and we would consider Burgah Highway an arterial roadway. Here you can see that entire area, um, is in the suburban growth category. And you can see the, um, no regulated flood zones or blue line streams, um, are detailed on the property, and no wetlands have been submitted to the county staff, but that would be covered through the development review process. Take a look at reasonableness in the public interest. Because this is proposed to be community business on an arterial roadway, um, it's aligned with our future land use map and our, um, future land use category of suburban growth. We want to guide growth and development to areas that have capacity. Also, objective 2.2, provide for high-quality and efficient and cost-effective services having a variety of commercial uses and activities, um, would hypothetically increase their cost-effectiveness and quality. So that's objective 2.2 and 6.2. Objective 1.3, um, would be non-supporting because there is a large aspect of the property that is forested, and objective 6.1 also would not be supporting because manufactured housing is not allowed in community business while it is in rural agriculture. Planning Board met on July 10th and voted unanimously to recommend approval of the request. Um, no citizens spoke against the application, and no military impacts were presented during the meeting. Chairman of the Planning Board's remarks are, there's a total of 23.5 acres on Burgah Highway near Pony Farm Road. It's currently zoned rural agriculture and proposed to be rezoned community business. No citizens spoke to the application, and the Planning Board found it to be consistent with the comprehensive plan and the future land use map. Here you can see an aerial of the property. You can see the existing business up front, um, and the entire property there being forested. And you can see there the sign posted in advance of today's public hearing, and a little bit of a wider look there at that commercial existing business. So it's respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider their proposed zoning map amendment of P R Z 2025 number 13, adopt a statement of consistency for the amendment, and authorize the chairman to sign the necessary documents on behalf of the county. This concludes this staff presentation. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Metcalf. At this time, we will open the public hearing. Mr. Smitherman, do we have anyone signed up to speak?
Yes, sir. Mr. John Pierce.
John Pierce, 405 Johnson Boulevard. I feel that Carter did a real good job of explaining our situation, uh, the current landowner, current use of the property. He's got a commercial building up front, and the plan is, has been such as a man in our area for storage, he wants to put an area back there for storage of, like, camphers and other vehicles, and, and I think that probably would be a pretty good use for the property, and I'm here to see if any of the Commissioners have any questions on me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. Any more speakers, Mr. Smitherman?
No, sir. That was the last speaker signed up.
So we will close the public hearing at this time.
Motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Come on back, Mr. Metcalf, for the hearing on the Maloney rezoning.
All right. Last item from planning and development. Says the Maloney rezoning, P R Z 2025 number 14. The applicant is Ms. Holly Maloney, while the owners are Holly Ann Michael Maloney. The request overview is from residential 15 to community business. 753-19 and 753-16.13 and 753-16.12 are the three tax map numbers in question. It's located at 3540 Wilmington Highway, and that's the address, um, for one of the properties. It's for the existing dwelling there. It's located in the stumps downtownship and is 3.11 acres in total. The existing use, there is, um, a residential structure on one of the properties while the other two are forested. The service overview for the area, there's a 12-inch underwater water main along Wilmington Highway, and there are, um, nearby areas are served by individual septic systems. There is no septic system on file, um, for these properties. The Verona Fire District with an ISO rating of three serves the property, and the most recent nearby traffic count comes from 2023, 26,000 trips. Staff estimates the capacity at 49,000 for Wilmington Highway. Schools serving the area is Southwest Elementary School, Dixon Middle School, and Dixon High School. The elementary and high school are currently over capacity while the middle school has capacity. Here you can see the existing zoning is that residential 15. Just down the road, there is a community business-owned property. Here we compare the two districts. Residential 15 is to accommodate moderate-density, single-family residential developments, um, allows for single-family developments, um, and minimum lot size of 15,000 square feet. Comparatively, community business is, its purpose is to accommodate the establishment of small-scale retail and service uses that would serve their nearby community, has no minimum lot size, and allows for multifamily, though, at a density of 10 dwelling units per acre, and allows for a variety of non-residential uses. Comprehensive plan details the area as rural residential, and it's provide for low-density, single-family. However, there is a non-residential prescription with the, the land use and development summary, with it being proposed to community business. That's what we would reference. And for the rural agricultural category, allows for limited retail and service uses. Um, and again, it would be predominantly, though, along R2 or roadways, um, as well as also at crossroads. Here you can see the entire area is in that rural residential category. And there is no, um, blue line streams or, um, regulated flood zones on the property. There is Harper's Branch. Um, it is a blue line stream, however, it's in the adjacent neighborhood, and no wetlands have been submitted to any county staff, but that would be covered through the development review process. The property is in the Flight Path Overlay District, and it is to provide for, um, us not to have any conflicts, um, with Camp Lejeune, specifically the New River Air Station. Um, the goal is to prevent potential interference with safe aircraft operations, prevent threats from falling aircraft, and prevent any sort of impact from aircraft noise as well. Take a look at reasonableness in the public interest. Community business, since it is along an R2 roadway with the rural residential category, would align with our future land use map and thereby objective 1.1. We want to, um, proactively manage and guide new growth to areas that have infrastructure, and this area does have several infrastructure that would have carrying capacity. And then objective 2.2, we want to provide for cost-effective services, increase in the number of businesses can provide for that. And objective 6.3, we want to encourage economic development, um, in areas of the county. Now, non-supporting would also be, um, objective 1.2, as there are some aspects of infrastructure that have limited capacities, such as our school system, and that's why objective 1.2 and 2.4 would not be supporting. And objective 6.1, um, because it would be going from a residential to a commercial, um, it is restricting and limiting, um, the allowance of single-family dwellings on the property. Planning Board met at July 10th and heard the item, um, voted five to one to recommend approval of the request. The applicant was present, uh, for the meeting and did speak on behalf of the application. Um, there were three citizens that spoke against, um, the application. Um, there was also one that submitted an email against, um, the application as well, um, and one citizen did also then speak in favor of it. So there was substantial dialogue at Planning Board, um, in terms of the back and forth there. Um, but the concerns, um, were around privacy. Um, if a business was developed, privacy for, um, the adjacent neighborhood, especially those along Redhead Court, um, as well as also traffic concerns there along Wilmington Highway. And then in that email they submitted against it, there was concerns again around privacy, property value of homes in, um, the adjacent neighborhood, and traffic again. Here you can see the properties outlined in red. Um, they're against the adjacent neighborhoods. A little bit closer look, you can see the existing single-family dwelling as, as well as, um, the existing, um, accessory structures on the property. Here you can see where we posted in advance of today's hearing, and there's a little bit of a wider look there. You can see the property, um, its driveway, um, as well its relative position towards, um, Wilmington Highway. The remarks of the Chairman of the Planning Board are as follows. It's total of 3.11 acres on Highway 17 near the South Creek neighborhood. It's currently zoned R15 and is proposed to be rezoned community business. In total, across those who spoke in emails, there are four citizens spoke against citing traffic, the pull-off area specifically, plus the neighborhood being behind the property, children playing in the street as well, um, and they were referring to within the neighborhood, not on US 17. As well as also the concern, um, with, or, excuse me, two citizens spoke in favor. The owner states their intent is to renovate the structure which she owns for a clinic, um, to allow for school exams and CDL exams as well as others, um, which is her primary business. She proposes to put a parking lot on the property, and there is a dense tree buffer between the property and the neighborhood in the rear. Ultimately, a majority of the Planning Board found it to be consistent with the comprehensive plan and the land use, and the future land use map. So it's respectfully requested that the Chairman, or, excuse me, the Board of Commissioners would consider the proposed zoning map amendment of P R Z 2025 number 14, and adopt a statement of consistency for the amendment, and authorize the chairman to sign the necessary documents on behalf of the county. This concludes this staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Metcalf. At this time, we will open the public hearing. Mr. Smitherman, do we have anyone that's signed up to speak?
Yes, sir. Holly Maloney.
Hello, I'm Holly Maloney, and thank you for that presentation. I'd like to just add just a little bit of detail about the clinic to give you an idea how it does serve our community. Um, I'm gonna skip through some of these things that I was gonna say, since he's already covered it for me. But just, um, an idea, currently I rent an area on Western Boulevard, and I serve by, completing employment exams, school assessment exams, and sports exams. Specifically, in the employment exams, um, I do DOT, CDL exams, which serve our truck drivers, our bus drivers, and our box trucks drivers, um, merchant mariners. I, um, complete, uh, exams for applicants for the North Carolina Wild Resources Commission, uh, the North Carolina Department of Social Services, where families who want to adopt or have foster children have to have exams for that. Um, I serve for the Department of Justice exams, Homeland Security, overseas contractors, reenlistment exams, uh, Department of Defense, and that's public school employees and more. I do school health exams, um, public school K through 12s, pre-K, college, entrance exams, um, private schools and daycares. The sports exams are for our public schools, our college rec leagues and boxing. Um, I also do forensic exams for victims of sexual assault. Um, I'd like to just share the numbers real quickly for the last year of what I've done, just to kind of give you an idea, um, who I serve. So I've done 629 DOT exams. Sorry, my quivering voice, I just cannot speak very well in public. Um, 18 merchant mariners, 258 school health exams, 574 sports exams, 26 college health, 24 college sports, and 413 pre-employment exams. The idea, excuse me, of the clinic is just to have a better place to offer these exams. The land itself, of course, the driveway would be improved so people could safely pull off of 17 into a parking lot. And the hours of the clinic itself are respectful to a neighborhood that I'm open eight to six Monday through Thursday and 12:30 to five on Fridays. I just wanted to give you kind of an idea of who I serve. It's very community-oriented. I'm sorry. And, um, I just like to help our community. That's how I'm trying to keep my clinic, um, sustaining itself. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Smitherman?
That is our only speaker that signed up for this hearing, sir.
All right. We will close the public hearing and bring this to the Commissioners. Motion and a second.
I do have some questions, Chairman. Where'd he go? There he is.
Stayed close this time.
So a couple of questions, and, and I don't think really this is gonna, um, affect Ms. Maloney's. Matter of fact, my first thought with you is, why haven't we hired you? So thank you for all that you do. But I am just concerned going from R15 to this, this business, um, district, and, and in previous times, uh, when we would allow something like this in my previous life, there, there were standards, uh, for this, when you would get up next to a neighborhood, uh, for light and sight barriers, um, and, and again, I, I don't- And again, I don't think, just hearing what I heard, that that's going to be an issue. But, you know, she might sell this one day to somebody. So is there in our, when we do community business and we're up against a neighborhood, do we have regulations on lighting and barriers, sight and light barriers and those kind of things?
So in Article 10 of the zoning ordinance, we prescribe a table that compares the use of the property versus the use of a neighboring property. So whether it is a neighborhood or an individual home, if a community business property is to be developed next to it, they would have to put up buffering. That is scalable depending on the intensity of that commercial development. So it's going to be, again, probably our mid-tier buffering. There is also standards around lighting, just in general with any commercial use. Can't shine on your neighbor, can't shine light into the roadway, can't shine light to blind an aircraft, right? Some of these common sense things that we have to have regulations for. So yes, there is specific buffering, and there's also light standards. There are three different buffering types that she or any future development could take advantage of, offense, plantings, or using natural. All of those would basically impact any sort of site of the commercial building. I cannot say in complete totality, though, but definitely mitigates a substantial amount.
And then my other question would be, because I saw, well, the picture's still up, actually, that we're on a four-lane road here. So will there be a requirement for acceleration and de-acceleration lanes?
So since it's DOT's roadway, that's going to be up to them. That would be handled through the driveway permit process. But again, that's outside of our jurisdiction because we don't own the road.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Any further discussion or questions? All right. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. So we'll now move into the Item 6 and General Items with the Bear Creek Fire Station Construction Contract, and I believe we'll have our Assistant County Manager, Mr. Ben Warren, to present this this morning.
All right. Good morning, Chairman, Vice Chairman, and Commissioners. For your consideration this morning, we do have the construction contract for the Bear Creek Fire Station project. We went through the formal bidding process required by North Carolina General Statute 143129, and we received seven qualified bids for the project. The low bid was received by Waters Contracting Company in the amount of $6,349,160, and following the conclusion of the bidding process, staff went through a due diligence process to ensure that the low bidder was both responsible and responsive, and based upon the information that we received, both of those thresholds were satisfied. And so this morning, it's respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider awarding the contract to Waters Contracting Company in the amount of $6,349,160 for the construction of the Bear Creek Fire Station, and if approved, authorize the Chairman to sign the necessary documents on behalf of the county. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions or motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Four to one. Thank you, Mr. Warren.
Thank you.
We'll move to Item B under General Items, the Piney Green Volunteer Fire Department Relocation ISO District Update, and Mr. Bradley Kenlaw will present that for us, our Director of Emergency Services.
Good morning, Chair and Board. Due to the fact that Piney Green recently relocated about eight tenths of a mile to the north, we respectfully requested the GIS Department upstairs to do an evaluation of their entire district to see what properties or parcels went in or out because of that move. We found, or they found that 147 properties, excuse me, 142 properties moved into their five-mile district, out of their six-mile district, and one parcel moved into their six-mile district that was previously a no-cover area. So this morning, we just come before you requesting you to approve an updated map of their fire district, which will be sent to OSFM and then to ISO for inclusion in it to their primary map.
Any questions? Motion?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to just thank Piney Green Volunteer Fire Department. They have been amazing partners. I'll go ahead and put it out on the table that right now, we don't have a future contract with them, and our contract with Piney Green ends at the end of this year, if I understand correctly, or is at the end of '26.
End of the fiscal year, June 30.
Yeah, so I just think it's imperative, Mr. Kenlaw, that as leaders in the community, that we try to resolve our differences with Piney Green Volunteer Fire Department. I don't want to burden the taxpayers with having to build a fire department when there's one standing there buying new apparatuses, when it's all there. I'd love to see us try to work those differences out. They're doing a great job, and I thank you for bringing this forward.
Sir.
Any further discussion or questions? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Kenlaw. I will move to the Consent Agenda Items, and that will be Item J, Final Offer on Real Property.
Good morning. So on May 5th of 2025, the Board of Commissioners accepted an offer in the amount of $4,500 for parcel number 060916, which is located at 406 Fox Trace Lane in the Swansboro Township. As required by statute, we did advertise in the Jacksonville Daily News, allowing other citizens to make upset bid offers, and the county did receive several offers. The last valid offer in the amount of $7,861.35 was received on June 27th, and is being brought back before the Board for consideration. The Board is also being advised that the last advertised upset bid, which ended on July 14th of 2025, another offer was attempted. However, the offer did not accompany a bid form. We only received a bid deposit before that noon deadline. As such, the Board can reject the last valid offer and request me to re-advertise the property, which of course may increase our sale price. If the Board approves the last valid offer, instead of re-advertising, the property will be sold as is, and a deed will be prepared transferring the property, and then the property will then be removed from the county assets. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioner consider the last valid offer and requesting me to re- or request me to re-advertise the parcel. The Board, if the Board approves, we would request that the Chairman sign the approved forms.
So Mr. Chairman, in this one, whoever, if there's a motion, it needs to delineate which way we're going, whether we're accepting the last valid offer or rejecting the offer and re-advertising.
Okay, so we need a motion one way or the other.
Make a motion that we re-advertized the offer.
Do we have a motion to re-advertise the offer? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I would just, yeah, like to point out, is I hate to do this to the person who's bidding, but if you look at the tax record, this lot's valued at $40,000. And if we sell it for $7,800, we're giving up $32,000, $32,000 of taxpayer money. Now, I don't know what the next bid will come in, how the next bid will come in, but hopefully it'll be a whole lot closer to the actual value of the property. And I have no doubt that the property is probably worth $40,000. I hope we get some better bids.
Any further discussion?
Are we breaking any rules, regulation, laws, or otherwise by going through this process and then backing up and starting over?
No, sir. You're allowed to reject the bid all the way up to the very end. And the reason this was brought before you is because we knew there was a bidding war going on, and basically the person who tried to submit a bid did not accompany it with a form, and so we understood that there was another offer out there and want to bring that to your attention because it could garner higher prices next time around.
Any other questions, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you. So that'll move us to Managers' Comments. Mr. Smithman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to report to the Board a great meeting that several of us had with leadership at the school system last week about finding ways to collaborate in our, in our joint efforts to serve the 215,000 people of Onslow County, and we think we are best served by doing that cooperatively and seeking ways to do things together, such as explore different delivery methods to build the new bus garage that you approved to get started this year. We've talked to them about working together on property acquisition for school sites so that we can plan for future parks, EMS stations, fire stations, and other things, and be more deliberate about how we acquire land in the public sector. And I think most excitingly is we're going to work together to present a stormwater policy, a best management practices policy as we build all these new schools and new public buildings. We want to set the example of how we minimize our environmental impact, and we will be working with the school system, come up with a joint stormwater policy to eliminate as much impervious surface as possible as we build public facilities. Also bring to your attention that the Emergency Operations Center project is nearly complete. They're in the punch list stage. I know that the folks that work in that area are tired of the noise and the disruption, and will soon be moving into new facilities there. And then finally, we are investigating ways to improve our EMS stations as quickly as possible. This Board approved the commencement of three EMS station projects during this fiscal year, and we believe that that should be the fastest building, the first buildings that come up. We are in dire need of new facilities and EMS, and we will be working very hard this fall to get those projects started. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Smithman. So move to Commissioner's Comments. Mr. Bennett, you want to start first?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I look forward to the groundbreaking in Burton Park, our medical office building that's coming, and I appreciate the work that's been done on the EMS stations. We really need, need those, and we need that Bear Creek Fire Station. These are essential infrastructure items that we probably wish we had done years ago, but now we're in a position where we can do them. So looking forward to progress on those. We thank everybody for being here today.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Pageant?
I don't have a lot to say. I want to thank everyone for coming and participating in the government. I'm glad the farmer's market is still moving forward and will continue and grow, and, you know, this Board's doing a lot of great things. EMS stations, as previously mentioned, will help a lot with the ambulances alone and the mileage we're having to put on, and them being in strategic locations and times, being able to get there quicker. So I think we're moving in the right direction. Thank you so much, and y'all have a great day.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Davis?
Yes, sir. Well, first, I want to thank the staff for being good sports, but we may have a workman's comp issue with Jeff and Mitch having to look straight up at that screen like that with their necks. But thank y'all for being good sports and letting us get around with y'all a little bit this morning. The Election Board issue that was brought up, Tony and I had requested that the Board of Elections, I believe the rest of the Board said that that was okay, am I correct? So the Board of Elections will be coming to us in a workshop so that we can hear what their requests and requirements are, and they did provide new information to us, I don't know, I want to say a month or six weeks ago. So hopefully, the Board will be able to come and actually present it to the whole Board at one time. This one here is a little off-topic of what we've talked today. I had, I got approached at a meeting today, and I'm not going to say any names or places, but it was brought to my attention that that significant folks or person in the county had made remarks concerning Camp Lejeune and New River and our military. And I just want to make a public statement that I support our base, I support Camp Lejeune, I support New River, and what could have been in the past is in the past. We have a base, bases here that provide an economic engine that we need. We get natural protection by having these Marines, sailors, and other military staff onboard, and the volunteerism that comes out of that base that supports our community is absolutely amazing. You there at your doorstep asking how to help. So to my friends at the base, I support you 1,000%. To my veterans that reached out to me, I support you 1,000%. I'm a big supporter of the base. You know, certainly, I would ask General Rizzo to consider working with us on some things, cooperative extension, who are my friends here in the audience would love to get 4H on your base. Our Health Services would like to continue to work with you, and of course, you know, General Rizzo, that we have this on-was issue that we do need to resolve. But those are issues I think we can resolve and should not shadow the value of our base and the personnel of our base. And so I support you guys 1,000%. Concerning Bear Creek Fire Department, I just feel I owe the public a reason why I voted no, and in and of itself, is it a bad thing? No, but I think we could have worked with Swansboro Fire Department and Hubert Fire Department and potentially come up with a shared working system with them, and we weren't able to get to that place. So that's unfortunate because I think there are some dynamics there that we could have really saved the citizens some money. So that's my comments. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks for a good meeting.
Thank you, sir. Vice Chairman now?
Just a couple of things. The Bear Creek Fire Department, if you've ever been there, it's kind of small, and the construction, I think, is a good thing, and it shows that the Commissioners are putting EMS and our fire departments and our first responders a priority, despite what you may hear and despite some of the conflicts. I think it's a good idea. I think it was analyzed pretty well by our staff. I commend you for coming up with a game plan to get this done, and we move forward and make progress in an area that is not a want, but it's a need, and that improves the response time capabilities, et cetera. So I'm really, I'm really excited about that. One of the things I just wanted to touch base on, and just to let you know from my perspective, you know, the political season is upon us, we're midterm, so we have several offices throughout the county, people are running for certain positions. And then we have the Commissioners' race coming up. Those that want to become an Onslow County Commissioner have to submit by December. And I just wanted to make it clear, as a Board of Commissioners, we do not endorse any candidate as a Board. Let me make that very clear. So when you see something that says the Board of Commissioners endorses this particular candidate, that is not true. That is not right, and I've stood that ground since I got elected the first time in 2016. If a Commissioner, in my personal opinion, wants to endorse a candidate, he or she is more than inclined to do that, even though I think it's wrong, because if you're going to go to one candidate's particular party, then you need to go to all the candidate's particular party or function, or whatever it might be, to be objective. Okay, our job up here as a Board of Commissioners is to be objective. And again, I will not, I will support those that I feel that should be in particular positions. I will do it privately, and I'll put, and my vote will be in the privacy of the voting booth. But again, when you see an endorsement from the County, the Board of County Commissioners as a whole, unless all the Board members agree to it, and we voted on that, it is not an endorsement from the Board of County Commissioners. Does that make sense? So I just want everybody to be aware of that because we're coming into the political season. I don't want any mistakes to be made or speculation drawn that the Commissioners support me, the Commissioners support this guy for sheriff, or this. No, it doesn't work that way. Now, if I want to say Robin Knapp, who's the County Commissioner, supports this particular candidate, that's Robin Knapp. It's not Royce Bennett, Tim Foster, John Davis, Tony Pageant. It's not the Board of Commissioners, because not one of us can speak for the entirety for one big entity like this. Does that make sense? So I just want to throw that out there. So if you hear things, you hear rumors, pick up the phone, all our phone numbers are available, and call me or whoever you want to talk to directly. I'll tell you straight up, yeah, your name.
I'll tell you straight up, yea or nay. So enough of that. I mean, it's honest mistakes like that. And we just have to be careful with that because we have to maintain our objectivity up here as Commissioners, plain and simple. I do wanna say thank you to Richard Gabbert, he's not here today, Animal Control. And it kinda segues into my next section. Is there a lot of stuff that's been said about Animal Control that I really find amusing? You know, and first of all, let me just say this. I adopted two dogs from Animal Control. Well, let me just say this, I adopted two demon dogs from Animal Control. Actually, they're gorgeous dogs, they're a set of brothers. They're Border Collie and I guess Labrador mix, and they're smart, and they're very attentive. But they're very good dogs, my wife and I are very, very happy. But what originally sent us to the Animal Control was false information on Facebook saying a particular dog was set to be euthanized. So I went there originally for this other particular dog that was set to be euthanized within 24 hours per all the social media, and it was garbage. The dog was not set to be euthanized. So you have some of these people that are saying that Animal Control is set to euthanize this list of dogs. No, a lot of that information is false. A lot of people, they react from the hip without verifying their information. Because when I went down there and talked to the Animal Control, it was an absolutely no. I saw the list. There are dogs that are intended to be set for euthanasia, but they're trouble dogs, dogs that have a bite history, or whatever it might be, they're just not adoptable. But the ones that we adopted were not set to be euthanized. The one I originally went down there to look at was not set to be euthanized. So what I'm saying is, getting back to misinformation, if you see something like that, pick up the phone and call. Because we have people out there that immediately get on social media and say, this is what I heard. Boom. And so when they put it out there, they think it's the truth, and it's not. So my wife and I are very happy with our two dogs. They're a handful, but I enjoy them. And Animal Control is a great place to find an animal if you're looking for one. My wife is a big avid rescue-type person. She doesn't wanna buy a puppy or anything like that. She wants to find a dog that she can rescue, and I support her, and it's great. So again, just remember that. Be careful what you hear and what you read, it's not always true. And the other thing, the last thing I wanna say, I'm not gonna say too much about it, is, you know, when you come up here to speak, don't politicize anything. Please don't politicize your beliefs or anything else like that. I don't politicize my beliefs, I have my personal beliefs. All of us up here have our personal beliefs. But when you stand before here and politicize those beliefs and then condemn us for it, that's not right. Because I have a right to believe in what I believe in, and you have the right to believe in what you believe in. So what I'm saying is, so what I'm saying is, don't politicize anything, okay? Because I have the respect to listen to anybody who wants to come up here and say anything towards the Board. But I'm not gonna get into a contest or a discussion with anything. And whether it's legal, whether it's right, that is your belief, that is my belief. But I don't...
We're ready to remove you from the meeting.
I just don't feel that it is appropriate to do that because everyone has a right, when you come up to the podium, to say what you're gonna say. And I respect that right that you have. But don't politicize it, please. Please don't politicize your beliefs, don't politicize your comments. When you come up to the Board of Commissioners to speak, you're not to direct your comments to a particular Commissioner. If you have a personal problem with a Commissioner, you take it up with that Commissioner outside the meeting. You're to talk about things that pertain to the Commissioners. So when I hear the word, I'm offended by this, to be honest with you, I'm offended as well when you accuse me and the Board of Commissioners of doing something wrong, plain and simple. I didn't say anything, I probably shouldn't have said anything. My wife warned me not to say anything. But I'm not, I'm not gonna sit down with my mouth shut when I hear something targeted at us that is inappropriate, wrong, okay? And it puts our staff on notice, which is absolutely wrong because our staff is outstanding, they do a great job. And let me tell you something, they do things by the law, period, by the book. So if you wanna come at us and scrutinize us, more power to you. That's all I wanted to say about that, I had to say it, I shouldn't have. But I appreciate everybody coming out here. We'll have our next meeting in two weeks, and hopefully the weather get cooler, which it has. And I just wanna thank everybody for coming out and listening, appreciate it.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. Thanks, everyone, for coming in this morning. Congratulations to Piney Green with their move, eight tenths of miles. Impressive that it brings quite a few people, lowers their ISO rating, brings people with no cover into cover. I think that move is kinda, you know, I appreciate Commissioner Davis's thoughts on Bear Creek, but I think that kinda plays into the role of where Bear Creek is and the impact it has between each of those stations. I don't know the distance, but I think we could, if we could figure those out. But I think more importantly, what's taking place now is the work that's going to be done on the strategic plan with everyone involved, with the fire services to bring all the municipalities together, Camp Lejeune together, and Onslow County, and the volunteers, that all these professional organizations working together to develop a plan with mutual aid and coverage and make sure that we take care of all citizens of Onslow County. So I think that is probably the most important thing that we're doing right now with that, with that plan that's coming to fruition. I think you've already had one meeting. I'm not sure if I read that correctly, but I know you'll be picking the organization that will be doing the survey and the work there. And there'll be trips to all of our volunteer stations and the leadership there to get things done, to really build a comprehensive fire service across the board with all entities that play into that role, which I just think is gonna be immense and really see how they all will work together and have no one under no cover, everyone in a low ISO rating, and save lots of, lots of money for everyone in that regard. So we appreciate that work and the work of everyone here. And Carter, we appreciate your work this morning. A lot of presentations, a lot of discussion on your part, and we appreciate that. So with that being said, we need a motion to adjourn. Tell them to move. We are adjourned.